I call to order the August 28th meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I will ask Mr. Christopherson to make note of the roll call. This time, I would ask everyone to rise as Jasmine Snow leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jasmine. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. The most recent agendas are in front of us. The only changes are a couple of new hires and one open enrollment request. With those changes, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
And moved in second to adopt the agenda, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Moving into dates to remember, August 28th through the 31st, which is this week, is teacher in-service. Tomorrow, August 29th, is the middle school welcome back. The 6th grade will be at 5:00 o'clock, 7th grade at 6:00 o'clock, 8th grade at 7:00 o'clock. August 31st is teacher in-service. August 31st through September 4th will be South Dakota State Fair. September 1st and 4th is the State Fair Labor Day holiday. September 5th is first day of school for grades 1 through 12. September 5th through 8th will be the kindergarten screening. September 11th, we have the first day of school for kindergarteners. Board of Education meeting at 5:30 here at the Instructional Planning Center and high school open house at 6:40. September 18th will be the Board of Education and Administrators Goal Setting Session at 5:30 right here in the Instructional Planning Center. September 25th, the Board of Education meeting at 5:30 here at the IPC. And September 29th will be an early release for homecoming. Those are our dates to remember. Uh, next item is our community input for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone present for community input? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to our next item is conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. We have none of those at this meeting, so we will move into the consent agenda. Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the following. We have 16 new hires to the school district that require board approval in order to be covered by a workman's compensation plan. We have one contract requiring board approval. It's a revised contract for Sabrina Brooks at a salary of $44,029. We have three resignations for board approval. There's Stacy Gilmer, sped par educator at the high school and TAP program with three years' service. Robert Brooks from the TAP program. And Tyann Budenhagen, ESL par educator at the high school with one month's service. Uh, we have bills to approve. Those bills are in our board packet. And we have one open enrollment request, OE 2017-03 for board approval. We can pass a consent agenda in one motion, or if any board member would like to pull out any item for further discussion, we can do that too. I'll ask if there's a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved in second to adopt the consent agenda, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is passed. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Nebelsek as he celebrates the successes in our district.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Um, first of all, congratulations to Assistant Track Coach Dan Thielen, who was selected as Cross Country Track and Field Assistant Coach of the Year. Coach Thielen is an expert in the pole vault and he's done a great job, so congratulations to Dan Thielen. Thank you's go out to the administrators and their assistants for all of the timing and putting together, the investment in time and, and dedication to putting the in-services together. And I'm very, very pleased with how those are taking place. And special thank you to custodians, building and ground, food service, and other support people for putting our, our campuses in shape to be ready to serve kids in a safe and caring environment, which is the part of our mission that they carry out. So, well done, and I believe by the time we get through this meeting, we'll be able to say that we are ready to start school next week. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek. Moving into board reports, our first report will be from our Nutrition Director Carol Tompkins on the School Nutrition Program.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to start off thanking you for the support of our programs, um, for maybe the new, um, board members don't know, but we administer the National School Breakfast and Lunch Programs, After-School Snack Program, Summer Nutrition Program, Concessions Fruit and Vegetable Grant, and we also help with the Heartland Backpack Program. Sometimes we talk about one program and another in our office and it sounds a little bit like alphabet soup. I'd also like to take a moment to publicly thank my two team leaders, Carla Sawell and Kathy Kemp, along with Kelly Johnson, the concession manager, for the great job that each one of them does, running their programs very smoothly. I'm grateful to be fully staffed and ready to begin on September 5th. Nutrition numbers last year, some information and some facts. We served 93,000 breakfasts last year, 321,000 lunches, 13,000 after-school snacks, and over a quarter of a million fresh fruit and vegetable snacks last year. Each and every year, our school kitchens receive two health inspections. Um, last year, we were blessed to have seven one, perfect 100s, 199 and 298. So as you can see, our scores are usually pretty good. It's reflected in the great health inspection scores each year, and I'm very proud of our staff who work so hard to maintain the healthy practices to keep our kitchens and our children and, um, keep our children safe. Our second USDA sodium reduction in our menus takes place this year. The new regulations that all came down, we finally got to the point where we had to lower sodium again this year. There is a third step down in '22, '23, and we're hoping not to have to take that one, but for right now, we're still following the regulations. Um, we did take chocolate milk off for breakfast because there was enough sodium in it. We couldn't keep it and maintain our hot breakfast, so we decided that for breakfast, the chocolate milk probably was gonna have to go. And lunch, classroom milk break and after-school snack will have choice, and chocolate will be in all three of those. So I don't think they're gonna miss it a whole lot. New breakfast and lunch additions at elementary are, a middle school is gonna have a Little John, which is like a cinnamon sugar whole wheat Long John. High school's gonna have a new egg, cheese, and turkey sausage wrap. Lunch menus this year are gonna include a cheeseburger meatball sandwich with pizza sauce and Parmesan cheese, pigs in a blanket barbecue pork sandwich, and a sriracha honey boneless chicken wing. So we're really trying to offer some new items again this year, and we hope the children like the changes. With fall fast approaching, um, we have access to some local products and we're incorporating them into our meals more and more as we can. Locally this fall, we're gonna have watermelon again, cantaloupe, hopefully sweet corn, several varieties of apples, and we're interested in doing this as much as we can, food that's locally grown just generally is fresher and tastes better. Um, we'd like to invite all the parents and grandparents to come to school and have lunch with us this year and with their children or grandchildren. It's, please call your school secretary by 9:00 a.m. on the day that you would like to come and join your child for lunch. The price for an adult lunch is $4.10, and please know that you're always welcome. Does anybody have any questions?
Just one.
Sure.
With the changes in DC earlier this year, are you hearing anything out of Department of Ag as to relaxing some of these restrictions and guidelines yet? Or anything coming down the pike in that?
They haven't reauthorized, even reauthorized this yet for money. Um, for one thing, we're a year behind on that. And the only two things that they've said so far this year was that if we could take the step down in sodium this year, take it. You know, continue to follow the regulations, which we did, but that they're not gonna penalize anybody this year if they didn't make it because the manufacturers, again, have not caught up. It's, it's, we're kinda back to where we were at the beginning. Um, and the only other regulation that they eased up a little bit on this year was you could put 1% flavored ma, milk back in, but I'm not sure that's gonna hold, so I'm a little leery to do that until I'm, I'm sure we can back up again. So I kinda wanna steady the course this year and see where this goes.
Just hoping a lot of those restrictions would get undone, but.
Nothing.
Nothing yet.
No, sir.
Any other questions for Carol? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, our next report will be from Carla Sawell, a team leader at the middle school, reporting on the summer feeding program.
As middle school kitchen team leader, my responsibilities include overseeing the summer food service program. In the spring, you supported our request to conduct the program, and this evening, we'd like to share with you our summer story. So here are the facts of the story. Summer Food Service Program, or SFSP, one of those alphabet soup items, provides nutritious meals to children during vacation periods. Our obligation to SFSP is following the guidelines set forth for us in this program. Our staff served students at the middle school from June 5th through August 4th. And all of June, ESL summer students, summer school students, excuse me, ate breakfast and lunch. Throughout the whole program, we served community families, the Nordby Center Day Camp, volleyball and basketball camp attendees, and the total meals we served this year were 15,352. Here's what goes beyond those facts, though. I mentioned our obligation to follow the guidelines, and we do. And the total numbers are part of the program year to year. But the satisfying result is that students were fed, who came every day and commented, "Oh, I'm starving, thanks." Or that it was clear that some students really depended upon this meal as one of the most important. And also that some adults who brought their kids every day commented, "This is so convenient." So thank you to all of you for allowing us to succeed in making available these meals during the summer months when the National School Lunch Program is not in operation. And with the National School Lunch Program just being days away from beginning again, did you know that all our bread is baked fresh at the middle school each day? That close to 75,000 hamburger buns will be made this school year? In addition, that doesn't include any of our other bread products? And that over 10,000 pounds of ground beef will be used in our homemade recipes this school year? The 1718 school year is about to begin, and our staff invites the Board of Education, all staff, parents, and grandparents, and community members to eat lunch with us at any time this year. Thank you.
Say, Carla, do you know how your numbers compare to last year?
I do, and they were down this year, and that is simply because last year during the summer, there was a program at Washington School.
That's right.
And that was not offered this year, so that is a reflection of those numbers.
I know a lot of community people really appreciate that, that program. It's great that we can provide it.
Yeah, it's nice to see them all each day.
Any other questions or comments for Carla?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Okay, our next report is from, let me try and get it here, from Mrs. Hinker, reporting on the summer school program.
Um, I'll just go over our English as a Second Language Program from the summer. Uh, we ran a four-week program again this summer. We went Monday through Thursday, no school on Fridays, from 8:00 to 1:00 each day. Um, while the children were at school, we served breakfast and lunch. Um, we had four kindergarten classrooms, three first-grade classrooms, two second-grade classrooms, two third-grade classrooms, two fourth-grade classrooms, one fifth grade. Um, we had two teachers for grades six and seven. And then at the high school, we offered three classes, so we had three teachers. We also gave the children PE services, so we had a PE teacher as well as library, and then a gardening and science teacher. We had pretty high attendance throughout the program. Most of our students come every day. We had 346 students enrolled in the K through 7 program. In the high school ESL summer school, we gave 16 art credits, 17 personal finance credits, and 12 welding credits. Um, we made reading and math a priority for our K through 7, so the students worked every day on reading and math skills. Grades 1 and 2 and grades 6 and 7 participated in the Huron Summer Library Program, and that program actually came to the middle school and provided services to our children. Um, grades K through 7, all of them participated in the Huron Middle School Library Program, which was run by Peggy Poteraski and Teri Slater. And the kindergarten students also had a community weekly speaker. And then we also participated in the United Way Day of Action on June 21st. We had 4,622 breakfast meals served, 7,915 lunches served, 2,400 books checked out from the library, and we only gave away eight Band-Aids, so it was a success. Any questions that you have?
How many Band-Aids did you give away last year?
Not sure. Should've kept track.
Are you seeing more students take advantage of the summer school program as it goes on each year?
Yep, we have, um, we send out information to register early in the spring, and most of our families will take advantage of it. The only time they don't is we do have families who will travel home, like to Puerto Rico or, um, other countries just to see families, so then they're gone, but... We'd like to see a few more students in the high school participate, but a lot of them are taking driver's ed, um, and they can't do both. And then, um, we also have a lot of kids who are working now.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but for the benefit of the public, there are special qualifiers for this. And the reason that this money comes out is to, um, make sure we don't have the huge backslide in ESL English acquisition during the three months when we're not in session, which actually allows all students to move forward more quickly in the fall once everybody's back together.
Correct, yeah. This is funded with, um, money that's earmarked for ESL students to continue their language proficiency.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will turn to our superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the new teacher training took place last week for five days. Um, this is for the benefit of the public, 'cause everyone here would know this, but, uh, when our staff come in, there's two things that are unique about their first contract. Uh, the one is, is that for the same pay, they have a hundred, 185.5-day contract instead of 180.5-day contract because they spend five days getting ready so that when the entire staff gets here today, they were all up to speed. And so that is, uh, is unique, um, to our system. Some have that many days training, others have less than that or more than that, but that is what we do. And then, uh, they were joined by the entire staff. So there were 15 new staff members who were here last week for a full week. The entire staff in-service began today. Uh, thank you, board members, for coming at noon and, and meeting the staff. Appreciate the comments of your chairman this morning. Um, it says on the schedule, August 31st as a day of in-service, but I think it's important to note that that will be a very, very small number of teachers that will be involved in Thursday's in-service. And that is because we give, um, our faculty's leadership. Uh, this year, it was more at the district level, other years it's been at the principal's level. But they have the opportunity to flex a day earlier in the summer that is a part of this contract. So in, uh, June, um, in the third week of June, we had almost the entire teaching staff who were here for a full day, which they won't get paid for until this contract begins, which is this Thursday. But they flex it out in order for us to get presenters and spend several weeks in the summer planning. And so that's why you won't see a lot of people around on Thursday because they've already put that day, uh... We look forward to the first day of school on, uh, next Tuesday. I'm anticipating an enrollment that, um, that, uh, Mr. Christopherson assures me that I can remove some of the worries because there's been a bit of, of, uh, refilling of, of kids as we've enrolled students over the last few days. And so I think we're gonna be at or above the 2,600 mark. Of course, we never know until the last Friday in September because that's the day that we are, uh, that we send in our official number, which is what our state aid is qualified in. But that starts next week. Next week is called kindergarten screening, for those who haven't heard that. And it does a couple of things. It allows the teachers to meet with every parent during the four days that school is in session next week. Uh, but the other thing it allows, it allows us to get the school system going, get the bus routes going, so that when the kindergartners join us on the following Monday, um, they are able to get on and off of buses and in and out of the routine of, of, uh, school and lunch and hallways by having the older kids all ready to go. And I think over the years, it's proven to be a very, very good part of our welcoming and our orientation for students. Um, I appreciate all the professionalism that I saw from the nearly 400 staff members that were there today. We went through many things that are required, and there are compliance issues, and I thought that staff handled that very, very well. Some of those are not very exciting when you're going through compliance, but they are a part of law. That's my report. Mr. Chairman?
Are there any questions for Mr. Nebelsek? Thank you, Teri. Uh, moving into old business, our first item of old business is a first reading of Policy JHCC, the Student Communicable Diseases. I'm assuming there's been no changes since last meeting?
That's correct.
For introduction?
Um, Mrs. Basler is at the, uh, open houses tonight, meeting with.
Understood.
Meeting with, uh, parents and students, and so her time was better served there. Um, there was extensive time that went into this, uh, review, including an introduction to the administrative table, and then coming back, and then, um, I went through it with Mrs. Foss, who coordinates the nurses. I went through it, uh, line by line, and then we sent it back out, um, all before it came to you. So I think we're ready to move forward on it.
Okay, are there questions or comments from any other board members? Okay, well, this will serve as first reading, and we'll have it on the agenda for a second reading and approval at our next meeting. Our next item of old business then will be, uh, second reading and adoption of the Teacher Assistant Teams Handbook. Bring that up.
Okay, and, um, we're available for questions if you have questions on it. But this is a, uh, a book that, uh, our staff, led by Mrs. Waylander, puts together. And what's very, very important about the Teacher Assistant Team process is this shows our best efforts at meeting the needs of all children prior to qualification for special education services. If you do not have that in place, um, the, the probability of misdiagnosing whether students need special ed services or simply the help and support, uh, is in jeopardy. And I think that our entire staff, uh, is growing in the area of coming up with, um, interventions, including what we worked on this summer, all before we incorrectly diagnose kids with special education needs. Ms. Waylander, are you comfortable with how I introduced what we do with it, or is there anything you'd like to add? Okay, so I would ask for your approval.
I don't believe there's been any changes since our.
No.
First reading, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the Teacher Assistant Teams Process Handbook. Is there a second? And moved in second in to approve the Teacher Assistant Teams Process Handbook. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor of approving the Teacher Assistant Teams Process Handbook will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Our next item of old business is Policy GCDB, Background Checks. Uh, there's correspondence included here, and this will serve as a first reading.
I'll yield to Mr. Christopherson if you have questions on any of this, as he has been at all of the specific trainings, and, uh, this has a lot to do with new compliance.
Is there any changes since the last time, Kelly?
Uh, since the introduction, we just changed the language about fingerprinting volunteers. We put our language in there that says we will fingerprint regularly scheduled volunteers or volunteers chaperoning, chaperoning an overnight trip. That wording was actually in there three times, and we had only.
Right, I remember.
Placed it in there once, so we put it in all three places.
Okay.
And then this other wording about our agreement with DCI, we have to have a point of contact. We have to have a non-criminal agency coordinator, and we have to have a local agency security officer. The sample policy had designated the superintendent take all those roles, but we had in our already agreement on file with DCI, we had the superintendent's assistant and the business manager taking some of those duties. So I updated the policy to reflect that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, well, then this will serve as a first reading, and we'll have it on the next agenda for second reading and approval then. Uh, next item is Policy GCDB E1, the Non-Criminal Justice Applicants Privacy Rights. This is also a first reading. Don't believe we changed anything since introduction, did we?
No.
No, that all looked.
It's just the companion policy to the background checks that lays out in policy the rights of the, uh, potential employee, what we can do with that information. They're assured it's private and only be used for making employment decision.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Any questions, comments? Okay, this will also be on the next agenda for a second reading and approval. Our next item will be the adoption of the tax request for 2017 taxes payable in 2018. This is something we do annually to set the mill levies for tax levy requests. tax levy requests. And Kelly, you want to comment on this?
There's no changes to any of those numbers. Those were the numbers that were included in the budget that was approved at the second meeting in June. This is the official document that I take to the Beadle County Auditor and send to the Gerald and Sandborn Auditors. Then they use this to levy the taxes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adopt the tax request for 2017 taxes payable in 2018.
I'll make a motion.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the tax request for 2017 taxes payable in 2018. Is there any further discussion or questions from anyone? Seeing none, we will vote. We're voting on adoption of the tax request for 2017 taxes payable in 2018. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's it for old business. Moving into new business, our first item is to request permission to allow a student past the age of 21 to continue to achieve a diploma without expense to the Heron School District. I'm going to ask Mr. Nebelsek to comment on that.
Yep.
Oh, looks like Mr. Radke's coming up to the podium to comment.
I'll hand it to him, okay? It's exciting anytime that we can reach beyond the, beyond the birth to 21 with an opportunity. And, and so I want Mr. Radke to explain what we have going on, because this is really what should happen with education. And then I'll make a brief comment about how it works expense-wise.
The state of South Dakota does not allow students to start a new school year after they turn 21. If they turn 21 during the year, they're allowed to finish that school year. The state does give school boards the ability to grant students to enroll once they pass the age 21, if they choose the best interests of the school and the student. That's obviously why I'm here today. We have a young man who came to us at age 18 as a freshman and spoke very little English. Over the past three years, he's done everything we've asked of him and more. He is four credits or one semester away from graduation. His attendance would not put an additional financial burden on our budgets, and the classes he is enrolled in have not hit their maximum capacity. So his attending would not remove another student from the classes he's chosen to participate in. Too often, we have students who turn 18 within a few months of graduation and drop out to go work. Nothing we've been able to do has shown them that they need the diploma, because they're just going to go work an hourly job anyway. This young man is a great example to his younger classmates of how important a diploma is for him to come back past the age 21. I mean, he could have, he never had to attend school if he didn't want to. He could have just gone directly into the workforce, but he sees value in what he's doing at Heron High School. With that, I'll answer any questions, but I ask that he be allowed to enroll for the 16-17 school year.
That was thorough. I have no additional comment.
This is excellent to see. I am very pleased to, to see this. I'm glad you're promoting it. I'm going to ask for a motion to allow the student that's past the age of 21 to continue to achieve a diploma without expense to the Heron School District.
Absolutely. I'll make a motion.
Been moved and seconded. Ours. Are there any further discussion or comments from anyone? Great, great, Mike. I really, really like this. Okay, then, since there's no further discussion, we'll vote on this motion to allow a student past the age of 21 to continue to achieve a diploma without any expense to the Heron School District. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Our next item of new business will be a first reading of the Tiger After School Program Handbook. Mrs. Nelson is here, if anybody has any questions on it.
As we introduced this, we're in the last year of the current grant program, and Mrs. Nelson inherited that program when she began her job as Director of Instruction and Curriculum a year ago. And, and so the revisions that she has offered are, are laid out in the handbook. And any questions you have? As, as you said, Mr. Chairman, she's here.
I appreciate that. I really like just being able to look at the first page and seeing what's, what's changed. Makes it easy to go through it that way. Are there any other questions or comments, discussion? Okay.
I'd make one note. Because of enrollment and because of the fact that there's an educational component, we have come up with a, it's, it's explained in there, but I just want the public to be aware of this. Most of them will receive handouts, I believe, this evening at the open houses, so they're receiving this information simultaneously. But I just wanted to make sure that it was publicly acknowledged to you that it's going to have a lottery system as far as who gets in, so there's no inside track to who meets services and who doesn't. Couple of caveats. If one student in a family is drawn in the lottery, everyone in that family qualifies, so that is a kick. And secondly, getting staffing to, to serve after school is very, very difficult. So those who serve after school, their students do qualify, or we would have even fewer people available to serve. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of those two components, which are part of deciding who gets in and who gets out. And then also for the public's benefit, this is the last year of the grant program. I don't know if we'll qualify for the grant again, but there appears to be more and more of a need to discuss a after-school program for pay as, as there is a gap between the people that are working, that it would be, some people would be more than willing to pay in the future in order for us to have a service for their kids between those hours when they, when the students are finished and when they finish work. So we just wanted you conscious of that moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek. Is there any further discussion?
Do we have to turn a lot of kids away from that program?
We do have a waiting list. Last year, I think it probably went up to maybe 80 students on the waiting list. And what we did was cut the middle school program last year in order to offer more support to the lower grades. And so we increased the number of students that we served at the elementaries last year, and still had a waiting list of about 80 kids.
And while you're up at the microphone, okay, the other component that I think would be worthy, because I know how much time we spent on this component, and that is trying to make sure that we're getting maximum use out of the slots that are available, and so that the correct information gets out. If you would just touch base with the board members on the qualifier for how much you must use the program in order to keep your slot. I think that's an important piece.
Yes. The attendance that we have established is that students would attend 90% of the time that they're in school. Originally, we were going to say 90% of the month, but we didn't want sick children missing school coming to school for a TAP to save their slot. And so 90% of the time, and they must fully attend from 3:30 till 5:00. The program actually runs until 5:30, but we want them there at least until 5:00, because we've built in some writing curriculum that we want to implement, and we need to have students attend regularly in order to be able to accomplish our academic goals in the after-school program.
And so that I'd follow up right on that. So you might have that sometime a student has to leave before 5:00 because their folks are leaving town. That's all well and good. It just, that's part of their 10%. So that's why the 10% allowance is there.
Do you know how many students take advantage of that, then, of the program?
The total number of students that we serve in the after-school program? We have a ratio of 10 to 1 this year. For every one employee, we have 10 students. And so we have 30 in kindergarten, 30 in first grade, 30 in second grade, 30 in third grade, and 30 for 4 or 5 combined, for a total of 150 students. And then I should add that we, because we were frugal last year with our money, we added the middle school program back in this year. And that will be a club-based format. So it won't be structured like the elementaries. It will be where teachers offer clubs and students sign up for the clubs, and so that'll have varying enrollment. They do not have to follow the same guidelines for the Department of Social Services. And so we don't have to have the same ratios for adults to students. We don't have to follow the daycare rules for the middle school that we do for the elementary.
Is there any further comments or questions? Okay, if not, then this will serve as first reading for the Tiger After School Program Handbook, and we'll have it on the agenda for second reading and approval at our next meeting.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think you know this, but the timing of putting this all together, once we received assurances that the money'd be there, we're actually passing out that material as it goes forward tonight. So they're going to have the material prior to you passing it, because we still like to wait a second meeting.
Understood.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, our final item of new business is the Heron School District Transportation Department Policies and Procedures Handbook. Mr. Sawville is here to answer any questions, and this would be our first reading.
And I would really love to explain it to you, but somewhere between my house and here, I lost my prescription glasses. And the only thing I have are my prescription sunglasses, and I'm afraid to put them on, because I'm afraid Ms. De La Rosa will take a picture, put it on the front page of the paper. And I don't want that to happen, but-
If you need a picture, get it out, because he needs his glasses to read.
I can't see in, I mean, it's like, but I did have-
Did you get your picture, and then he can put his glasses on?
I did get one.
No, I'm okay. I did have the team leader, Kathy Boston, type up a short synopsis of what the changes mean or what they were about. Some of them were just page numbers, because we expanded on the no child left behind in a bus thing, where we, they have to go to the back of the bus now and double-check all. I mean, it was just some wording for that mainly. I don't remember what else was in there, Kelly, but it seems like that was about it.
That was the big part when I was reading through it there.
Yeah, a lot of it was just numbered, page numbers and stuff, so.
I appreciate the page it tells what all the changes are. That makes it easy. Are there any questions or comments for Rex? Okay, if not, this will serve as a first reading for the School District Transportation Department Policies and Procedures Handbook, and we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting for our second reading and approval. Thank you, Rex. Hope you find your glasses.
I'm not cheating, no, Dave.
Okay, with that, this completes our agenda. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Sure as me, yeah.
Do it all, do it all over again.